Creator and sustainer of all things and all people, you are the source of all wisdom and light, enlighten our minds to receive your guidance so that you may lead us into true wisdom. May all that we say and do in the service of this county, whether as elected member or as officer, be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. I would now like to invite nominations for the position of Vice Chairman. Mr Galton?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm delighted today, at an unusual time of the year, to nominate Geoffrey Kaufman for the office of Vice Chairman of the County Council until the annual meeting on the 13th of May. Geoffrey first became an elected councillor on Odeby and Wigston Borough Council in 1973, that was some considerable time ago, and has been the mayor twice at the borough. He continues to serve as a Borough Councillor representing the Broxhill Ward. He first served on Leicestershire County Council from 1981 to 1985, was re-elected to the County Council in 2013, where he represents the Odeby Electoral Division. As a County Councillor, Geoffrey is a member of the Children and Families Overview and Scrutiny Committee, he also sits on the Combined Fire Authority for Leicestershire and Rutland, and is a member of the longstanding advisory group on religious education. Geoffrey has spent his adult life fostering intercultural and interfaith understanding and tolerance. He has been a long-serving member of the Hate Crime Panel, Review Panel, of the Leicestershire Police Service, and in 2019 Geoffrey secured the County Council's full support for the Safe Passage Our Turn campaign, to encourage the government to support unaccompanied refugee children. During his term of office, Geoffrey will be supported by his wife Lily, who is here today. They have been married for 35 years, they have four grown-up sons and two granddaughters, and for the past 30 years they've lived in Odeby. Lily is also an experienced councillor, having been first elected to Odeby and Wigston Borough Council in 2011. She is currently Deputy Mayor and will become mayor this May. So you can see that both Geoffrey and Lily will bring a wealth of experience to the office of Vice Chairman of the County Council. I know that together Geoffrey and Lily will make a great civic team, and will do all they can to support you, Madam Chairman, in your role as Chairman of the County Council. I would like to wish them every success in their year ahead, and propose Geoffrey Kaufman today. Thank you.
... to start their careers. Now that they are retired, they are able to spend more time with family when they get the chance between, as we've already heard, quite a lot of civic duties. This husband-and-wife team are going to bring experienced perspective to the civic role, which will be sure to stand them in good stead for the part they will play in supporting you, Madam Chairman. So I hope they enjoy their civic duties, half civic duties this year and full civic duties next year, and I'm proud to wish them every success. I move, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. Can I invite Mr Geoffrey Kaufman to come and sign the declaration, please? I can't remember where it's at. And can I remind all members to please switch the microphones on when speaking?
... in the county of Leicestershire, having been elected to the office of Vice Chairman of the Leicestershire County Council, to hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgment and ability, dated this day, the 19th of February 2020.
I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Madam Chairman, first of all, I was surprised, I was expecting a vote on this, but I'd like to thank my proposer, Simon Galton, and my secondder, Nick Rushton, for putting my name forward for the appointment as Vice Chairman of the County Council. I also wish to thank members of the County Council who have elected me to this office until the annual meeting of May 2021. This appointment is a great honour, and I'm very much looking forward to playing my part in supporting you, Madam Chairman, Pam, in the coming months to further enhance and promote the civic life of this county, and I thank you. But while I'm here, I just want to pay respect to my predecessor, if it wasn't the sadness of the late David Jennings passing away, which has given me this, and I am really sad because I'd like to think he was one of my friends over the years, and it'd be difficult for me to replace him. But thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Dr Ayne, I'm really sorry, I apologise, but I believe you want to say something?
Thank you, Chair. I did just want to say that the Labour Group really do welcome this appointment of Mr Kaufman. He is such a good ambassador for intercultural issues, interfaith issues, and I think that as the public face and under you, the Vice Chair, he will be someone who will stand up for diversity, which is something I know that this council takes very seriously. So thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Dr Ayne. I was so eager to have Geoffrey as a Vice Chairman and not let him escape. I missed page two on my agenda. So, in the event of having to evacuate the council chamber, would everyone leave by one of the two exits at the rear of the chamber? Officers will be on hand to assist any people with disabilities. Mobile phones, may I ask, or members who have mobile phones with them, to ensure that they are switched off so that they will not disturb the meeting? Agenda item number two are my announcements. I'm sure that members will wish to join me on congratulating Tim Webster, who was made a Member of the Royal Victorian Order in the New Year's Honours List. This is a special honour, given at the personal discretion of Her Majesty the Queen for his services to the royal family. Tim has been recognised for his longstanding work supporting the Leicestershire Lieutenancy. I welcome all visitors and guests of members, and especially Geoffrey's family, thank you for joining us today, and of course anyone who is joining us on the webcast today. Agenda item number three, to receive the report of the returning officer.
Chairman, I present the report on the election of Mr Lesley Mark Fillimore to the County Council, at the election held on the 12th of December 2019.
Congratulations, Councillor Fillimore. I hope you'll be very happy in Leicestershire County Council.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. Pleasure to be here. Thank you, Madam Chairman. A very small personal interest, my wife is employed within the county SEND programme, so it's just a personal interest to declare. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. A personal interest, Chairman, in the Leader's Statement with regard to HS2. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, a personal non-percevalary interest in item eight on the agenda, the MTFS, is to do with passenger transportation budgets. Thank you.
Yes, Chairman, item seven, non-percevalary interest in the Leader's Position Statement on HS2. I shall not take part in that discussion.
Yes, a personal interest in HS2 in the Leader's Announcements.
I understand you have a supplementary.
Thank you, Chair. If you indulge me, I'd just like to read a few words from the Prime Minister's recent statement, because they do go together well, don't they? The Prime Minister's put forward his vision of a country where electric buses convey us cleanly around towns, roads, that are free of congestion, that cause so much pollution, and where a new generation of cyclists pedal safely, happily to school and work in tree-deppled sunlight. Now, I just thought that was a wonderful phrase, from an extremely unusual Prime Minister, and my point was to ask the lead member for transport what his vision was, or whether he could find a vision in his latest document, which spans the next 20, 30 years, in fact. All I get is, I think it's written by officers, to be honest, Chair, the existing LTP3 already talks about the proportion, the promotion of sustainable transport modes, and I would expect this to continue. What a vision. And I'll just ask him what his vision really is, and perhaps we can hear about it later on, if he can't express it now.
Mr Payne?
Well, thank you for a wonderful supplementary question. I share the vision of the Prime Minister, as indeed Mr Hunt does, but in all seriousness, in all seriousness, I think if you look at the detail of the announcements that we know so far, much is about what we're already doing here in Leicestershire, so it's welcome that more monies are going to be made available. We're yet to see the finer detail as to how we access those monies, but I'm pleased to say that when it comes to passenger transportation, how we still support subsidised bus networks, and our vision around rural mobility and demand-responsive transport, these schemes that the Prime Minister have announced will certainly help us grow the schemes that we currently undertake here in Leicestershire. Thanks.
Madam Chairman, mine has been circulated, and unfortunately today it's relatively long. So, on fair funding, there's a lot of interest, understandably, in the government's levelling up agenda, in that I am very clear that my priority, still along with Byron's, is to get fair funding for Leicestershire. With that in mind, we welcome the appointment of Rishi Sunak as Chancellor of the Exchequer. Rishi understands us well, and he understands Leicestershire well, because where he represents North Yorkshire has very, very similar funding problems to what we have. He understands the current system is broken and is in dire need of reform. Earlier this year, I met with all the Leicestershire MPs, along with, it's referred to here, my senior team, which is obviously the chief, Chris Tambini, Ivan and David Briskam. The MPs are with us in wanting to secure fair funding, but the issues for all of us are, and for the Chancellor of the Exchequer's, it will not be impossible to increase the quantum, it will not be possible if they don't increase the quantum of local government funding. If that doesn't happen, the impact of fair funding will not be as significant as we hope. To be fair to the MPs, they have met with MHCLG, and have asked them also to meet the DFA, given the critical funding issues for which that department is responsible in children's social care. One bit of bad news is we note that Rishi is still quoted as saying that all government departments tell us to find 5% savings. It says here, I can give them a few pointers, but if he's asking them to still save 5% savings, it doesn't look to me like he's going to increase the quantum, although maybe he's asking all the others to save 5% to increase our quantum, we can only hope. On devolution, there's a lot of talk about devolution around, various people are proposing various things. Government's manifesto was ambitious for devolution, and the voice, the words I hear being mentioned down in London, when I go there as CCN Vice Chair and various things, is that voice, place, economic growth and functional economic areas will be crucial in any, any form of devolution. They're also to feature in a white paper later this year, I was told by the Members of Parliament, it's likely to be May, and what I've told the Members of Parliament, and the CCN, and the LGA, that the best thing that any government could do would be to make an offer that we can then move towards. And I've also said it should be slick, quick and comprehensive, because what people don't want is hours or years and months of arguing about what government does or does not want. So hopefully it will be, make us an offer, and be slick, quick and comprehensive. Ahead of the white paper, and after speaking to my group, and Terry and Simon, I paused the progress on our unitary structure bid for Leicestershire, because I think it would be better if we waited to see what the government wants from us, and then if we can make our unitary bid fit, at least then we'll be targeting an open door, a semi-open door, rather than a closed door. So if you think that we might not see a white paper till May, I would imagine that we might not be able to bring anything back here till July, because I think it would be, personally I think it would be a waste of time to spend a lot of money and time until we know what the offer is. Our document is good, but it will certainly need tweaking in light of a white paper. Just trying to abbreviate things. Flooding, obviously I want to extend my sympathy to every individual, family, business and community affected by flooding in recent days. My area in particular, Long Watten and Daisworth, has been particularly badly funded, flooded and funded, and I'm attending a public meeting there on Monday with an officer from the County Council to try and help and explain to them what we're doing about the flooding, which is a massive issue for loads and loads of people countrywide. Blake's making a separate statement about flooding, because it's his responsibility, and I'll have a few more words to add once Blake is finished. On coronavirus, or Covid-19 as it's now called, we're aware of the threat posed by this, and we'd like to thank Public Health England, supported by our own public health staff, for their efforts in testing suspected cases in these Midlands, and in leading the NHS operational response locally. There's been much coverage of the positive cases in the UK, but in the same time period, over 3,000 cases have been tested and come back negative. Within the council, we've issued guidance to staff on the internet via a manager's digest advising good hand hygiene, and we can't express that enough, good hand hygiene is the crucial thing to do. If you washed your hands every half hour, you wouldn't go far wrong, and that goes for a lot of germs and diseases that are passed around. So we've emphasised good hand hygiene. We've answered a number of questions from schools, care homes and private sector and departments within the council, and we're awaiting government guidance on who has responsibility for housing someone, should they present as having symptoms in Leicestershire, but who don't have anywhere to self-istigate for the fortnight. The local resilience forum provides updates from national teleconferences, whilst a briefing of Strategic Command Group chaired by the Director of Public Health was held last Thursday to brief public sector organisations across Leicestershire as to the current position. Immediate actions and future planning is ongoing. Even though much remains unclear as to the clinical attack rate and the severity of the virus, it is prudent that we hope for the best and plan for the worst. To that end, departments have requested to ensure their business community plans are robust and up-to-date as part of our preparedness planning, if this does develop into something more widespread. On a personal note, I've had people say to me that they won't speak to Chinese people, and people who look like they're Chinese, they think that it is associated with being Chinese or from that region. It certainly is not, and we need to, whenever anybody says that to us, or says words which point to that, we need to be constantly telling them, it has nothing to do with being Chinese or from the Far East, it is a virus, it just happens to have broken out there, and maintaining relationships, good relationships with China and the Chinese people is absolutely paramount. So if ever we hear that, we must rebut it as soon as we hear it, because it is factually incorrect. On HS2, I welcome the government's go-ahead for HS2. I know some people don't, including my own Member of Parliament, but this ring will bring significant economic benefits to Leicestershire and the wider economy, acting as a catalyst for growth and investment in the cities it connects, and will help rebalance the economy of London and the North. HS2 will certainly provide extra capacity for both the public, and hopefully get some freight off the roads and onto the rail when some of the pathways on the existing lines open up. It'll help reduce carbon as well, which is another good thing. Improved connections from the wider HS2 to the Ride of Well network will create a step change in rail travel connecting these Midlands to many parts of the, of the UK. So that was one of the main things we wanted, we didn't just want it racing through, we want interconnectivity, so you could technically get on a train at Leicester, an old-fashioned one, and if there is pathways clear, the train could then connect onto the HS2 line and go to different places, and also vice versa, and I think there's great opportunity for that, and hopefully that will be delivered as part of HS2. Holocaust Memorial Day was established in 2000 following the Stockholm Declaration. The commemorative event held by this council every year rightly focuses on the unique horror of the Holocaust, whilst recognising subsequent and ongoing atrocities. It provides an opportunity to reflect on the causes of prejudice and hatred, whether potential or actual, in our communities, and what we can do to stop identity-based hostility on any grounds from taking root, and that is exceeding the important paragraph. One way to send an unequivocal message to those who wish to cause harm or distress to our local communities is through the adoption of the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Definition of Anti-Semitism, which the Cabinet did on February 7, and we are proud of that, and we have written to the Secretary of State confirming that we have passed the declaration. Adoption of the definition, in addition to our existing hate crime policies, will ensure we have a robust approach to tackling all forms of hate crime, including those perpetrated on religious grounds, and to supporting Leicestershire's diverse communities. Again, it's something, I think it even certainly predates me, but it's something since I've been leader, I've been very proud of, and very keen that we are seen to adopt these principles in this last part of my stage. We should all be proud of the work we do on all manner of religious tolerance, and race tolerance, and treating everybody equally, no matter where they come from, what ability they've got, what disability they've got, everybody was born equal and should be treated equally. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. Mr Galton?
Yes, thank the Leader for a very comprehensive and wide-ranging, well, comprehensive statement, which covers a number of issues. Just focus on a couple, I think the most important ones facing the council at the moment, and that's not to undermine the issues around flooding and the virus, which I very much agree with his comments in relation to not singling out any particular people, and behaving in the sort of manner that he alluded to. I think that the fair funding, I mean, it's very difficult to comment, isn't it, because we just don't know, and that is the problem. We should have known by now, or had a good idea, and I think in all honesty, I doubt if Mr Sunak knows at the moment what he's going to do, and I think the danger is that this could still be left in the too-difficult box and not addressed in the, in the next few years. And we seem, and we have in the past, pinned a large amount of hope on fair funding, and yet as the Leader acknowledges in the statement, that if they don't put an increased quantum of funding in, then that impact and the outcome of the review won't be as significant as we've hoped, and worked so hard to try and achieve. And it seems to me that what's perhaps happening at the minute is, there's a lot of downplaying of the impact of what effect fair funding might have, and more, more emphasis being put on devolution, and it's like that door's closing, so can we open the devolution and secure more funding through devolution deals? But as the Leader acknowledges very clearly in his report, devolution deals do not, or
horror of the Holocaust whilst recognising subsequent and ongoing atrocities. It provides an opportunity to reflect on the causes of prejudice and hatred, whether potential or actual, in our communities and what we can do to stop identity-based hostility on any grounds from taking root. And that is exceeding the important, important paragraph. One way to send an unequivocal message to those who wish to cause harm or distress to our local communities is through the adoption of the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition of antisemitism, which the cabinet did on February the seventh. And we are proud of that. And we have written to the Secretary of State confirming that we have passed the declaration. Adoption of the definition, in, in addition to our existing hate crime policies, will ensure we have a robust approach to tackling all forms of hate crime, including those perpetrated on religious grounds and to supporting Leicestershire's diverse communities. And again, it's something, I think it even certainly predates maybe, it's something since I've been leader, I've been very proud of and very keen that we are seen to adopt these principles in, in this last part of my state. And we should all be proud of the work we do on all manner of religious tolerance and race tolerance and treating everybody equally, no matter where they come from, what ability they've got, what disability they've got. Everybody was born equal and should be treated equally. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. Mr Galton.
Yes, thank the leader for a very comprehensive and wide-ranging, wide-ranging statement, which covers a number of issues. Just focus on, on a couple, I think the, the most important ones facing the council at the moment, and that's not to undermine the issues around flooding and the virus, which I very much agree with his comments in relation to not singling out any particular people and behaving in the sort of manner that he alluded to. I think that the fair funding, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to comment, isn't it? Because we just don't know. And that is the problem. We should have known by now or had a good idea. And I think in all honesty, I doubt if Mr Sunak knows at the moment what he's going to do. And I think the danger is that this could still be left in, in the too difficult box and not addressed in, 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 in the, in the next few years. And we seem, and we have in the past, pinned a large amount of hope on fair funding. And yet, as the leader acknowledges in the statement, that if they don't put an increased quantum of funding in, then that impact and the outcome of the review won't be as significant as we hoped and worked so hard to try and achieve. And it seems to me that what's perhaps happening at the minute is there's a lot of downplaying of the impact of what effect fair funding might have. And more, more emphasis being put on devolution. And it's like that door's closing. So can we open the devolution and secure more funding through devolution deals? But as the leader acknowledges very clearly in his report, devolution deals do not, or have not, in the past addressed core funding for the day-to-day services that local authorities have to provide. And he refers in particular to vulnerable children and adults, roads, pavements, verges, and all the things that are very important to local communities and keeping them safe. Devolution deals tend to focus on the other aspects that he spoke about, improving the economy, economic development, and so on and so forth. Now, if I'm wrong about that, fine. But the feeling I'm getting is that more and more emphasis is being pinned on getting a devolution deal. And that's the way we'll resolve these funding pressures. And I'm not convinced about that. And if it has to be a condition that you have to have one of these mayors, I think that's going to be extremely problematic for an area. You know, the East Midlands is not a functional economic area. How are we going to agree priorities between Derbyshire, Nottinghamshire and Leicestershire? We have different needs, different priorities. It's inevitable. I can see how it works for the West Midlands. I can see how it works in Greater Manchester, where Andy Burnham now speaks for the whole of that area. The idea that one person, that people be able to identify with across the East Midlands, we have problems with turnout for the police and crime commissioner elections. What, what's turnout going to be for an elected mayor for a combined authority? I think it's fraught with problems and difficulties in a large, diverse rural area such as ourselves. And as I say, to suggest that we can perhaps sort out the funding issues by having it with strings attached, I'm not convinced. Now, we're going to see how it's going to play out in the next few months. I think there are some other councils maybe signing up to this. I think there's others that think this is not such a good idea. But I do hope that whatever does come out, we'll have a wide-ranging debate in our bodies, both scrutiny and indeed in this council chamber, before we agree to anything. Because I am aware that there is a lot of discussions going on and people saying to ministers, well, we'll have a bit of this or we'll have a bit of that. That's not the way to do it. The way to do it is public debate in this and other council chambers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take the opportunity of congratulating the cabinet actually, in relation to adopting on behalf of the county council, the Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition on antisemitism. It's something I'd only heard about this morning, but I really would like to take the opportunity in saying, well done. It's not often I say to a Conservative, but leader, but really this is something that is leading, which is leading in Leicestershire. And while I'm on my feet, can I just take the opportunity of congratulating and thanking the officers for the event that they put on on the twenty-seventh of January, Holocaust Memorial Day? I would like to see more people there, but the presentation and the, the talk by Professor Aubrey Newman was illuminating and interesting. And I'm delighted that the county council are one of the minority of authorities in Leicestershire. I know Obi and Wigston do it, I know the city do it, to mark Holocaust Memorial Day. And I recommend all the other districts that don't do something, learn from the county council and learn from the districts and people that are doing something. But so, thank you very much and well done, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And I thank the leader for his comprehensive position statement. Fairer funding is great rhetoric, isn't it? It always sounds like it's going to be such a nice thing. Distribution from each according to their ability to each according to their need, it goes down well with this group, or at least it might do. I do have to have concerns though, because fairer for Leicestershire cannot mean greater deprivation for left behind communities in other areas. And it cannot mean loss of funding for inner city areas who have greater responsibilities. And I agree with the leader, there has to be a bigger cake if we're going to share it more fairly. But I do have my doubts. Because this is a government that still hasn't worked out how it's going to fairly deal with social care funding, to the extent that the LGA Green Paper is apparently going to turn into an LGA White Paper, where we try to point out to them on a cross-party basis what we really think they ought to do. And is devolution the answer? Well, even the leader seems to think not. I have serious concerns, and as we do on, on the Labour Group, about this being about devolving responsibilities down, but retaining power and funding and taking that up and further away from the democratic process. Our unitary vision, this council's thoughts that we put together and that have now been paused, included some real devolution of powers. Two area committees, and it retained planning powers to local communities. We seem to be seeing planning powers about to disappear off to a development corporation in one, one area. So yes, I, we have our doubts that this will have any benefit to frontline services in, in this council. I will defer any remarks on flooding to Blake Payne's report, and I look forward to hearing that, it's a serious issue. On the coronavirus, I, I think, I think it was very pertinent of the leader to make the link between that and Holocaust Memorial Day. And I second the comments made by councillor Kaufman on that issue. We must counter fear, because those unfounded fears and misinformation could lead to hate speech. And that is, it would be an appalling thing to happen. I'm pleased to say that Caroline Wellbeing Radio, who has a great deal of support from this council, have already put out messages about coronavirus. Many of them are simple, catch it, kill it, bin it, coughs and sneezes, spread diseases, we all remember them. HS2, oh yes, councillor Rushton, I remember you saying, all pain and no gain. That's a long time ago, isn't it? The East Midlands Councils meeting, which I attended, we were told by the chair that the East Midlands councils have lobbied hard for HS2. Whereas of course in Colville, we're still faced with a one hour and nine minutes longer journey to get to London on HS2 than we currently take on the Midland Main Line. And we are seriously concerned that we, this, that if HS2 goes ahead, which it looks like it might do, that we will see down, further downgrading of the Midland Main Line. And we will be left even further behind in North West Leicestershire. So as I asked then, I will ask here, can we lobby just as hard, if not harder, for mitigation for areas of our county who are going to suffer the most disruption? Thank you, Chair.
There are no other speakers, so Mr Rushton, please.
On, on fair funding. Fair funding is, is of paramount importance to us. As you'll hear from Byron in a minute, with the one-year announcements where we've had more money, we're okay. But it's virtually impossible to do an MTFS. We are doing one, but it's based on the best estimates of Chris Tambini, Declan, Byron and the officers here. We, we really do not only need fair funding, and urgently, we do need a proper, long-term strategy from, from the government on, on how we're going to be funded. Now, they have, they have committed to fair funding. But as we all said, it depends on the quantum in there. And some of the models which Pixell do for the county council's network, if it's not fettered by capped collars, floor ceilings, we could be twenty, thirty, forty million pounds better off. But when you put in capped collars, floor ceilings, without the quantum increasing, the number isn't so large. So all we can do, and we do do, is keep pressing that we need fair funding first. On, on devolution, there is some potential on devolution. If we get the Development Corporation, and that may well be announced in the budget by Rishi, there could be quite a lot of money heading towards the Development Corporation. And that will almost certainly come from the government with the potential for a mayor. Because the expression which we've all heard, no mayor's no money, may, there may well be a mayor for just the Development Corporation area. So we will have to wait, we'll have to wait and see on, on that. But I can promise you something, on our devolution agenda here, which is paused, nothing will be hidden, Simon. We will take it to cabinet, see what cabinet say, and we will certainly run it through full scrutiny. And whatever we, we decide between cabinet and scrutiny, as I've always promised you, it will come here for a free vote at full council. Because some of my members aren't in favour of it, some are in favour of two unitaries, some are in favour of staying as we are. So the final decision on anything will, will come here. Geoffrey, thank you, Gerald rather, Geoffrey, thank you very much for all your support on, on our antisemitism agenda. We're happy to pass it and I'm grateful. Terry, you say that we can't just fetch money from one area and give it to the other. I just want to quote some really, really outrageous examples. If you live in London in a bandy property, you pay seven hundred pounds a, a year, a year. If you live here, you pay seventeen hundred pounds a year. Now, the difference is just so vast, it is absolutely, you, you can't find rhyme or reason about why it's so vast. Now, if they, if they came down thirty, forty, fifty percent and moved us down or stayed the same and moved them up, it, it would be more fair. I can't see any reason, they have, if you live in, if you run a borough in London, you haven't got very many old people, for instance, which we've got. They all leave when they get to fifty because they can't stand living there. And they all come up here. You know what I mean? So I can't see any rhyme or reason why they pay one thousand pounds less than, than they, than they, than we pay here. And then you go to Surrey if you want to see somewhere, I don't want to particularly plagiarise Surrey all the time, but Surrey is vastly better funded than us. And that's possibly an even wealthier area than what we are. We're not saying we're poor, but the discrepancies in the, in the bills and the money that are given, you just can't find a, a way to justify, and you can ask Chris Tambini and Declan to look at it, and you just can't see your way through the fog of how it's finally been arrived at. Now, on, on the devolution offer in our unitary bid, the idea wouldn't be to completely unpick it. I respect exactly what you said, our devolution bid does delegate powers down to parishes, Colville in particular, where you've always been aspirational for one. So it does devolve down to parishes, it does create area, area committees for planning. So all we would attempt to do would be to take account of what the Secretary of State is asking for, if he does offer us a devolution deal with some form of mayor above us. And I do realise that, Simon said, getting people to turn out for it is difficult. But that would be the idea of it, not to rip the whole thing up, because we spent a lot of time and officer hours on it. So we'd certainly want to keep the bits that we're super keen on, but just put in bits which helps us move through a door that may be half open or may be fully open. On HS2, obviously I'm a hundred percent with you representing North West Leicestershire, where a lot of the track comes through my division, comes through Meesham, then mine, a bit through Ashby, then mine, and then the rest through Trevor's. So mitigation is one hundred percent important. And that is why we moved from being opposed to it to, because I always thought it was going to come, to joining the argument and joining the game. Because you've got to be in it to win it. There's no point carping from the sides. We need to be at every single meeting where it's discussed to ensure that we get the mitigation. And that's why Trevor in particular is tasked with going to every single meeting that mentions HS2. And I can tell you, there's a, there's a blooming lot. And then of course, there's going to be the now the hybrid Act of Parliament going through government, where we're going to again have to spend big money on consultants and people to go and lobby at committees in government to make sure that if it's coming, we get the mitigation. I mean, we may well achieve our, well certainly your, your aim for many years, some money towards the Iverno line. That is the only way we'll get it, if we can get some money off HS2 or from some government scheme. It's not that we're opposed to it, it's just that we can't afford to run it to the county council. But if we can open the door on the mitigation money, that is the way we can, we can get the goodies which, which we desperately need, especially in North West where we are, where as you say, we're sometimes a day, an hour away from the blooming station, let alone the train down to London. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr Rushton. Mr Blake will now make his position statement.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a statement that's been tabled, so I'll keep the script and read to the statement and try not to go off piece too much. Storm Dennis update. Last weekend, as a result of storm Kiara, highways responded to one hundred and seventy call-outs. The calls were mainly for fallen trees and branches which caused disruption to the network. Storm Dennis followed this weekend. This storm brought with it heavy rainfall and high winds causing even more disruption on the network. The north of Leicestershire appears to have been worst affected with a total of eighty-two call-outs over the weekend. The highways control room remained open throughout the weekend, with thirteen gangs responding to one hundred and twenty-four incidents, which were mainly related to trees, branches down and flooding issues. The increased rainfall resulted in sixty-five residential properties and nine commercial properties being flooded throughout the county. And this is, this figure's based on current information. During the weekend of storm Dennis, the highways team, main activities were dealing with the flooding, signing flooded areas, providing sandbags, dealing with fallen trees and the closure of thirty-three roads across the county due to floodwater. And can I just remind members that back in October, November and December last year, and we reported this to the Environment and Transport Scrutiny Panel in January, we were called out five hundred and eighty times. There were eight-one requests for sandbags, and there were one hundred and three roads closed at that same period. There were eight additional section, section nineteen investigations resulting from the storms of that period too. This latest flooding unfortunately brings an increased risk that the condition of the network is likely to be affected by the floodwater, which could result in damage to carriageways with more potholes developing over the coming day. This is particularly so as our crews are currently out gritting overnight due to low temperatures with the freeze thaw action increasing the likelihood of defects occurring. Sixteen road closures are currently in place due to floods and two teams are on flood patrol today, collecting signs as appropriate. And just on that issue of signs, the department are putting signs out where roads are flooded. We are aware that some of those signs are being stolen. Can I remind people this is endangering the public's life, and it is also causing massive problems on our road network. Can I also remind people that might be listening who care about this issue, that if there is a sign or indeed if there is a flooded road, please do not drive through the flooded road, because the response from the emergency services is stretched at the best of times. And it's not obviously helpful for people to ignore signs when they are actually out. Government has opened up the Bellwind Scheme in relation to storm Dennis, and Leicestershire has been one of a number of counties eligible to apply. It should be noted however, that this funding is only for recovery costs and has a relatively high threshold spent before any claim can be made. We will however, be collating the necessary information to understand if we will be in a position to make a claim under this scheme. In order to address the impact that severe weather events have on the highway network and local residents, an additional five hundred and fifty thousand pounds of LCC funding has been allocated to the highways budget for this forthcoming financial year. The funding will be used to support section nineteen investigations where properties have been flooded, drainage diagnostic work, using specialist equipment and to carry out the necessary repairs that this work identifies. Whilst this is very welcome boost to the department's budget, it should be recognised that this will not meet the growing level of demand for flood and drainage related works across the county. Members will be aware that the Conservative general election manifesto included a four billion pound for new flood defence programme over five years. Whilst we don't yet know what this means for individual authorities, allocations are likely to be made as part of the March budget. And we will be pressing with government the need to maximise funding to help us address the substantial flood related issues across the county and indeed the country. Now, members will be aware there was a dropping session with information as to how to download the One Network app and the Roads app onto our phones before the meeting today, and that was circulated by the Member Secretariat. So can I remind members that you can find the latest position on the county's roads by logging on to the one dot network site, and the link's in the report, where an update position on roadworks and traffic interruptions such as flooding incidents is available. And finally, can I just pay my thanks to the thirteen gangs and the department for all of their work throughout storm Kiara, storm Dennis, and obviously the storms back in October, November and December last year. They do an amazing job. There's only thirteen gangs, and I've just given you a flavour of some of their work. And I think we are all grateful to what they do for Leicestershire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Blake. I'm sure all of us are very grateful for what, particularly those who've been flooded, for what the county workmen did this weekend. We're now on agenda item eight, which is...
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Where do I start? I was called about four thirty in the morning on Sunday. A chap in Oakthorpe, his bungalow was about to flood. It had only just dried out from last time it flooded in November. And the reason he contacted me was because I'd been dealing with it along with county officers from the previous occasion. He didn't feel like anybody was taking any notice of him. Called the fire brigade, they'd passed it on to the local resilience people. I rang the, the number here, the emergency number, also rang the fire brigade itself and the district council. They were fully stretched, fire brigade ran a call, going to call out if it was life or death situation. Well, his bungalow did flood, it was under six inches of water and he had to evacuate again.[1797.76][1797.76] Later on that day, after I'd been back to bed, by the way, I went down Riverway, which nearly always floods, and yes, the river was up, and it was the worst I'd ever seen it. And I went out with some local residents, get some sandbags, bring them back to protect people's properties. We have the usual trouble spots in Bath Lane, Viardivana, which I raised at the last meeting when we discussed this. Spoke to Blake Paineabouts, spoke to various officers. We had a big meeting in January, local parish councils, district council reps, local residents, and we're trying to move that one forwards. But people are just sick of it keep flooding. It's been going on for over ten years, that one, time and again. Yesterday, I went to see some tenants on Westminster Industrial Estate, which is CAD Council property, and none of the units there flooded. So, I've been to see those residents and take stock of what's happening there, and I'll be following that one up. Tomorrow, I'm going to see somebody on Ashby Road in Meesham, where they had serious floods. That never used to flood, but it's flooded five times in the last few months. So, I'm going to see what they've got to say about that. I saw flooding on Spring Cottage Road, where there was Derbyshire, fire brigade were in attendance, and on Gallows Lane out of Meesham towards Neston, where the police are in attendance. There were also problems in Albert Village, which I saw some of. Madam Chairman, this county council needs to do more. People are fed up. We need action on this, and we need it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In relation to the flooding, we've all suffered across the county over the last few years. However, the problem that we are facing is the amount of water that is coming down on us. The surface water, the water tables are absolutely to their brim, and they've been to their brim now for months. What we are seeing is surface water flooding across our county that are causing these issues. This county council, and I know, working with Blake, is doing its very best, working with the Environment Agency and working with other agencies to try and resolve these issues. What we have to do is we have to put models in place to get money from the Environment Agency to help residents with their personal flooding. We all are trying our very best and working hard to get that through the Environment Agency and through the Flooding Assistance Programme. What I would like to say, over the last few weeks, I've had flooding in my community. Luckily, I've not had houses flooding, and I'm thankful for that. But what we have is had roads flooded, paths flooded. But the work that our officers do at this council, working day and night for us, the benefit of the community, is second to none. And I want to put on record my grateful thanks to the work that our officers do in helping residents across this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr O'Shea. Mr Osborne.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, following the floods that we had in November last year, we had a presentation of the MTFS, and I said at the time... And this was in December. I said at the time that I thought we should be spending more money to the environment to accelerate the work that was being done. I was aware that money had been... Further money had been allocated to Blake's department for doing that. Now, following the amount of flooding that we've had this month, and I would echo what my colleague said about the response of county council in trying to mitigate the problems of it. What I would like is to have more money in the MTFS, taken off, say, other programmes which I don't think are so imminent and really need a response so quickly as this one does. I'm concerned that what we are promising to anybody who asks us is that we are doing investigations into what could happen. What residents are saying, and especially those who have been out of their house and have to live in either a caravan or something like that, is they actually want action rather than promises of a jam tomorrow. And I do understand that we are only a partner in the flooding. And I would ask Blake, when he responds to everything that's said, to re-emphasise the lead role which the county takes, and that it cannot on its own, even if it identified a problem, it cannot do it on its own because it has partners who have to consult. It strikes me that years ago, when we had difficult weather, people, especially insurance companies, would just shrug their shoulders and just say, "Well, that's an act of God." I think science has said quite otherwise. And I know at the moment that we are concentrating on the effects and maybe the prevention of flooding and the consequences of it. I would ask Blake to remember that actually it's climate change and the consequences of the wider problems that the changing aspects of climate is having on us. It's not just flooding. And so, when the investigations are being carried out, I would ask that it's not just concentrated on the flooding issue. Because by summer time, we'll all be there saying, "Well, when hell, when's it going to rain?" Because we're just so basking in the sun that we need something else. It's a larger issue than just on the flooding issue. So, I would again emphasise to Blake, if he could, for the record and for the many people of the public... Because for us as their representatives, we have to manage their expectations of what can and can't be done. And anything that he would say to that would be most helpful. Thank you, Chair.
Dr Eynan, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I thank the lead member for his comprehensive report on this extremely important issue. And many of us have spoken on it for good reason. And I, too, would like to thank the officers of this council for the immense amount of work that they have done over the last few months, and particularly during Storm Dennis, and also district council and borough council workers and volunteer floodwardens, all of whom have been out helping. One of the phrases that we've heard a few times, and certainly in my patch I've heard, is this didn't use to flood until they built those houses or that industrial development. In Hugglescote, there was flooding at Grange Road Station Road. This happened, has been happening since November. Surface water is being funneled from the new housing developments in the Grange Road area into old Victorian combined sewers. These then become overwhelmed, they wash back into people's homes, and the surface water then becomes contaminated and floods into the watercourses that enter the River Sence, putting our environment at risk. We currently have a national planning policy framework that believes in sustainable development, by which they mean, as far as the planning authorities appear to be concerned, you've just got to put it up because otherwise the planning inspector will overwhelm you anyway. We have an environment agency underfunded that appears to be relying on out-of-date desktop information. And the local people will be saying, "Oh, that area always floods." That message never seems to get through to their desktop. We have Seven Trent constrained by their inability, under the law, to refuse to add new developments to their network, even when they cannot foreseeably put the infrastructure in place to take them. I am very pleased, Chair, that there is going to be a flooding scrutiny review panel on flooding. And I do hope that at the end of this, we won't just be looking at what we can do, and not just managing expectations, but taking our concerns about this and escalating them to a government that needs to join up its thinking on climate change. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr Eynan. Mr Rushton.
Thank you, Chairman. My additional item, I probably wished I was saying it before everybody spoke because it does help, and it will certainly help Peter Osborne. So, Blake's statement referred to the government manifesto commitment to provide four billion for new defence programme over five years. I'm sure we all agree that's welcome. Our usual rule of thumb, which Chris Tambini tells me what we usually do about these sort of announcements, is that Leicestershire would get around one percent of any announcement. So, that would give us on an accountant's version of it, we would get forty million over the same period of the announcement of the four billion, which is five years. So, what we need to do is ensure that the MPs get Leicestershire's fair share of the four billion, which is, in our view, just on the basic need, one percent, which is forty million. Because we've all got exceedingly badly flooded areas. And as Terry said, some areas never flooded before. So, we need to write to our MPs, especially the new ones, and tell them, make sure we get our money because every single member of this council is concerned about flooding. So, whilst several million pounds could be spent on drainage improvements at the earliest opportunity, I do believe it is necessary for the government, local authorities, and all agencies to take a more strategic approach to what is a flooding crisis, and not the only one in recent years. We need to balance short-term measures with long-term protection against flooding, which leads into the wider agenda of climate change and environmental protection. I note that several politicians whose areas are principally affected by flooding are of the same view. It's also worth noting that the leader of Hereford Council, where some of the worst flooding has occurred, has been saying in the last few days that it's equally important that the government take action to ensure a more joined-up approach locally between local authorities, the environment agency, water companies, and the emergency services. Local resilience arrangements can only take you so far. And I think what we are seeing is an inevitable consequence of the fragmented responsibilities affecting the livelihoods of individuals and communities. I would also like... I would also say that what we do in Leicestershire without additional money comes our way. We need to ensure we do not transfer the problem from one village or road to another. It's really important that we take a measured response to a really serious problem, it says here, which is increasingly on our doorstep, it's actually in our houses, that is the problem. And the chief was telling me earlier on about an area which was flooded years ago, and the agencies and all that went in. And what they said to the farmers was that you've taken all the trees away, and you've taken all the hedges away, and they forcibly made them put them back. And that has stopped that area flooding since, without hard concrete measures. It's not just about hard concrete. And there's things on Facebook from various people commenting on this. We've got to approach it differently and more greenly. Because if I build a concrete round my house, which you could do, it just puts more water round your house. So, I think we need to get... Ensure we get the money from the government. Certainly increase the amount of people who go and clean out gullies, but then look at it and think of green solutions, not just concrete solutions.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. Mrs Newton.
Thank you very much. I'm sort of just going to add the story that I have, and thank Blaine for his quick response three weeks ago. I've got the ace... Part of the A6 in my patch has just nicked, and it's perennial in terms of the amount of flooding that goes on there. In addition to the complaints in my own division at the weekend, I had to cope with complaints on Facebook from Kegworth, from your patch, from Chef Shed. They think I was the part of the problem because I wasn't able to solve it from... But I want to say that it really is getting worse on that A6 road. Indeed, the local pub in Havden, the Anchor, actually got refurbished, and it was... Everything was ruined. And when I rang to speak to the manager, the owner of the pub, I was to blame for it all because I was the local councillor, nothing was being done. But there is a serious issue there, and I've mentioned it every time they were building houses in the A6, that the drains are inadequate to actually cope with heavy flooding, and that is true. I think three weeks ago, we had the severe flooding. We've now had severe flooding. And as I say, I think it's a perennial problem. And I do hope that a message goes out from this county council to residents that we're taking it seriously and something will be done. Thank you, Chair.
Mr Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. It seems to me that in December, I went from floods to bushfires, back to floods. So, it's been quite extreme for me. It's quite interestingly, Sky reported only yesterday that I think it takes three events of flooding for a resident to respond. Three floods. So, they wait for the second, it's only after the third they decide to do something. I think climate change is important, but we also have to look at the European law of a lot of our rivers where we're not allowed to dredge or clean because of certain laws. So, we need to go back a bit and look at, not constantly blame climate change, but look at some of the things that are going on. In Australia, it was arsonists, not climate change. It's been on fire forever, Australia. So, we need to look at that. So, there is some laws that we need to look at. But mainly, the reason why I'm standing, we've had a very positive response from residents, from the LCC, to the borough, to the agencies that worked like a partnership, which is what we're proud of. And we've had some very good feedback of the response, helping residents throughout the borough. And I'd just like to thank this county for being involved and the other agencies for doing a great job. I thought there's been a very, very positive response. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Pearson. Mr Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, too, have experienced flooding in my ward, Appleby and Magna. And they've had two up to three floodings now, some people. And it is serious, without a shadow of a doubt, it is serious. One person last year spent eighty thousand repairing his home, only to be flooded again. One other person spent twenty thousand putting a brick wall at the bottom of the garden against the brook, and the manhole popped at the front of his house and flooded all through the front door. So, it is really serious. But I want to, contrary to councillor Sheehan, have had amazing success and help from the authority. The... And the way that they've responded and the way that their staff here have responded... I mentioned before, and I will say it again, they say you shouldn't always single out people. But Andrew Smallwood, one of the flood officers, has been exceptional. He's attended two meetings, and you could imagine how people feel sitting there in this meeting, and I'm the county councillor, he's the flood authority, wears the rope, very angry. But he was exceptionally good, and the work that they're doing is exceptionally good. We don't have pots of money. There's no quick fix to this. I've got to tell people next week that if all goes well, we've got a better chance next year of stopping some of this. But the reality is also that people who are responsible by law for frontages on to brooks and small rivers are not behaving correctly. There's no maintenance going on. Now, some of these people have legal obligations, and all they do is cut the bush at the end of the garden, bits fall into the brook. Now, I found that, and I actually watched that in Appleby Magna. A fellow wading out, always pulling up bits of what has been deposited there. So, clearly, what we're saying is this is bad, but we've lost all the maintenance ethos and the dredging and care of the banks. Everybody's sat back, and it suddenly rains unusually, one after the other, after the other, and suddenly we have this disaster before. So, there's a lot of things. Money is important, but there's things that people could be doing, carrying small bits. It's not always millions of pounds. They had a fellow who works for the parish council up to his waist in waders, trying to pick bits out of the brook, which I thought was very heroic, but equally absolutely stupid and dangerous because the water was flowing. And it was against a bridge, and you couldn't see through the bridge. And I crouched, "I couldn't with all the overgrown." And then there's parts of the waterway where they picked out trees this size that have been chopped, and there's great chunks of trees lying around. So, it is blatantly the lack of care and the lack of maintenance as well. So, we've got to try and find a way that those are associated, by law should take the responsibility seriously. But obviously, the flood authority have the powers then to do the work and seek recovery of funds from people. So, there is mechanisms there, but it's not always straightforward because we haven't always got the people with the ability. Either some are very, very old, there's landowner in his nineties, so he's not going to be able to go out and care. And if it's a situation where they can't manage it. So, we have got to look at all these difficulties. But it's more than just straightforward. But all I can say truthfully, this authority has been fantastic. The offices have been... The offices have been helpful, they're not running away, they're not hiding away. When you sit in a room full of people who've really got problems and experienced serious flooding, you know, to sit there calmly and do what he did was fantastic. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mrs Radford?
I should be very short and to the point. I mean, not wanting to make light of the problems, and some people, but I'd like to just say that some residents, following what has just been said, use the dikes and the watercourses near to their properties, and especially at the back, and just dump all their hedgings and cuttings in there, which block up the watercourses, and thus making it further down the, down from their properties for some others to have the flooding. Before the latest problem, I was regularly called out by neighbours, saying that their neighbours are dumping stuff in the brooks and that. And the legal thing is, if you've got a brook or a dike near your property, it's up to you to make sure it's cleared out. And fortunately, Shepshed, we didn't have any properties flooded, but we did have some roads. And following Onfrot, Bettis said, I had regular people get in touch with me about the A six at Haddon, even though I'm Shepshed. But it is, it is down to residents to make sure that the watercourses near their properties are kept clear.
Thank you, Mrs Radford. There are no more speakers, Mr Pegg.
Well, what a great debate. It's a really important issue, can be a motive, as we've heard. I'll respond to the key points, not every point that's been made, but I think Mr Osborne raised a point of clarity about our role as lead local flood authority. It's true, we have this role, it's a relatively new role, but we discharge that in conjunction with other partners. So the other flood risk management authorities are the Environment Agency, who manage the risk of flooding from main rivers, reservoirs, estuaries, and the sea. The water and sewerage companies such as Seven Trent, who are responsible for managing the risks of flooding from water and fowl, will combine sewer systems, and the district and borough councils, who will provide sandbags to offer protection against floodwater and assist with the recovery phrase, including setting up of emergency centres. And as has been mentioned in the debate, the final party with the role are private landowners, we call them riparian owners, and I think the points have been well made within the debate, that perhaps much more can be done by those private landowners to clear the gullies and the ditches that they own. One of the issues we have as lead local flood authority, we do have the responsibility to conduct what we call a section nineteen investigation, where the private property has been flooded. But we do not have the teeth, unfortunately, under the legislation to coordinate all those other agencies to actually do something about it. We can point out, if we can get to the bottom via an investigation, where the problem lies, but we do not have the powers to force those other bodies, all those responsible people, to take the action they need to take. And that is a current fact of life that we just have to manage and deal with. Can I thank Ozzy for everything he said, he was absolutely spot on, and he always speaks well, and can I also thank him as the support member to me, he sits on the flood bodies that the department have to engage with, and he does a fantastic job. Again, I think Terry Iona made some really, really good points. I read recently that one tree takes fifty gallons of water, and, you know, there is a belief out there that with all this development, what about, what about the flood risk? There's a presumption, and quite rightly so, that the authorities, through the planning process discharged by planning authorities, look at the flood risk associated with development. And to that extent, much like highways development management, we are guided by national policies and more local policies, particularly the national policy has to how to respond to those applications. And so long as those applications are provided a proper assessment that covers all the criteria that we're asked to audit, generally speaking, they will get a thumbs up. But that doesn't tell the whole story, because we don't know down the line if those SUDs, Sustainable Urban Drainage Systems, are actually working, which is why I've instructed the department, and I've already reported this to the scrutiny panel, and I think I've included in a prior debate here at full council, to actually take a special look at some of the most recent developments, especially where we know that flooding has been associated with new development, to see whether these SUDs are actually working. And then we'll find out what's going on, then report back to the planning authorities regarding that. In terms of the adequacy or inadequacy of the drainage systems, again, we've reported to the Environment and Transport scrutiny panel, much progress with how we cleanse and deal with drains across the county. A couple of years ago, we did a thorough audit as to how to approach drains, and we've also invested in software that maps all our drains. And as a consequence to that, we have got a very good story to tell in terms of our maintenance of drains. But included in that five hundred and fifty thousand pounds that's going to be allocated to the department to support our responsibilities around flooding, a hundred and fifty thousand pounds will be supporting drainage, further drainage repairs, and another hundred and fifty thousand pounds will be invested in a camera to go into the drains, an additional camera, so we can save ourselves some money from not having to outsource those maintenance responsibilities, but also try and expedite our response to some of the more problematic drains. So we're on to that. Finally, can I just thank council for the debate? I think it's been very, very useful. And once again, I'd like to thank the team in the Highlands Department and the thirteen gangs that respond so brilliantly on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Blake. We're now on to agenda item eight, which is the MTFS. Can I remind members that the item refers to pages twenty-three to two sixty of the council booklet, the supplementary pack sent out to members, and the revised appendix E, which was emailed to members and paper copies circulated at the group meetings. I now call on Mr Rhodes to move.
Well, Chairman, we've had a very interesting debate about flooding, and which brings to mind some of the issues about resource allocation when you have very little money. This is the tenth austerity budget, and my eighth as lead member for finance and resources. And in that period, we've delivered two hundred and ten million pounds of savings since two thousand and ten eleven. By the end of this medium-term financial strategy period, that figure may have to be nearer three hundred million. Our four-year plan shows that pressure is building on both revenue and capital budgets, and social care, and SEND services in particular. And with the comprehensive spending review and local government funding reform proposals not due now until the spring or autumn, there's a great deal of uncertainty. There are challenges being faced by all hundred and fifty upper-tier authorities. Leicestershire has historically managed better than most by facing challenges in a rational considered way and sticking to medium-term financial planning. It's put us in a good position where we can carefully plan and consider savings. Several councils are not coping well, and without extra funding, we'll be in serious difficulty. The SITF Financial Resilience Index, which was published a week or two ago, makes it plain that we are not one of those councils. So our four-year plan shows the pressure on both our revenue and capital budgets, additional demand for social care and special educational needs and disability support, combined with inflation, is driving up costs by a hundred and twenty million pounds per annum. The biggest feature of this MTFS is uncertainty. We have the uncertain economic environment, a one-year local government settlement on which to build our whole plan, facing the biggest change in local government funding arrangements in a generation, with Fair Funding Review and the Business Rates Retention still to come in, and the Budget and Comprehensive Spending Review, which will be the big events in two thousand and twenty. Government will be restrained by both the economic environment and the spending promises already made, but are showing an ambition to invest in public services and become less London-centric than we have known it to be. The new resources announced in September spending round and recent local government settlement are welcome, but we need to keep pressing for a long-term funded solution to ongoing demographic and cost pressures. Now, funding is only half the story. Cost pressures may change but don't go away. A few years ago, adult social care was the focus, then it was children's social care, now it's SEND. So I want to just say something about the SEND. And I've no doubt that my colleague Ivan Old will say a little bit more when it's his turn to speak. In two thousand and fourteen, the coalition government brought in legislation to improve educational opportunities for children with special educational needs or disabilities. I've no doubt they meant well, but they failed to make provision to pay for the improvements. So six years on from then, we have an explosion of numbers of children with EHCPs, which is the successor to the old system of defining children with special educational needs, which require the upper-tier authorities like Leicestershire to provide many more special school places or equivalent in mainstream schools. These are supposed to be paid for out of the high-needs block of the direct school grant, which is outside the council's mainstream budget. But the high-needs block money has not increased sufficiently to meet the demand, and in our case and many other councils, a large deficit has started to build up. For Leicestershire, this could hit forty million by the end of the MTFS period, unless we do something to avoid it. Now, the Department for Education say these deficits can just build up and roll forward. Okay, but the responsibility under older legislation falls back on the council eventually. And that means that we have, have had to make provision in our forecast to cover the Leicestershire deficit. So Ivan and I have written a strong letter to the Secretary of State for Education, asking for this to be resolved, because it's clearly wrong that the county council has to pick up the responsibility for funding this unforeseen new burden. Let me say something about growth. The MTFS includes inflation of sixty million, primarily driven by the national living wage, and another fifty-nine million pounds of growth mainly for social care, both for children and adults. But there is a little bit of good news. Through sound financial management, we are able to direct some of the one-off resources available next year to invest seven point two million in highways initiatives that will help to respond to some of the priorities identified by the public, such as flooding, which we talk about drainage and speed measures. Now, on the savings front, over the next four years, the county council will need to save eighty million, of which twenty-four million has already been identified from our services, and seventeen million of cost avoidance, which we're going to try to bring in to avoid the high-needs budget problem. But that leaves thirty-nine million pounds still to be identified as part of a range of initiatives to close the financial gap. It's not going to be easy, especially since savings over the next four years, seventy-five percent of them are eighteen million off by efficiency rather than service reductions. Now, on the resources front, we're proposing that the council tax rises by three point nine nine percent, generating an additional twelve million pounds per annum, primarily to be invested in supporting vulnerable people, which we continue to make our highest priority. A three point nine percent rise increases the county's share of ABDE bill by around fifty pounds a year from April two thousand and twenty, which is equivalent, of course, to around about a pound a week. The public consultation showed a good level of support for council tax increase to be deployed in this way. The future may bring further cuts. Business rates retention consultation that accompanied the fair funding consultation confirmed the government's intention to remove the council's share of accumulated growth in two thousand and twenty-one. This equates to six, three million pounds cut for the county council per annum, and eight million pounds cut for the LEAP. Now, on the capital front, we have a capital programme which totals six hundred and seven million over the four years, including a hundred and thirty-one million in this coming year. It's the county council's largest ever four-year programme. We have investment in growth service improvements and invest-to-save projects, including forward funding of developer contributions. The programme is funded from mainly, from partners, primarily government, and demonstrating good relationships, that's about three hundred million, and the county council's own resources, derived from revenue of eighty-five million. But that leaves two hundred and twenty-two million, a huge sum of money temporarily from internal cash balances until they're repaid by developer contributions. We should need to be innovative in identifying sources of extra funding for capital and ensuring sound financial management of the resources that we do have to meet this challenge. Lastly, I just want to mention just three new items which we were able to include. It's through the county council's good management of resources, a bit of leeway was created in the plan to allow some money to be invested in priorities identified by the public and by scrutiny, above the draft MTFS proposal. We have to be mindful of challenges ahead, but hopefully these will be well received. So we've put a hundred thousand pounds more into Leicestershire grants, so we can support communities to deliver their local projects, seventy-five thousand pounds to continue the SCAM's intervention project, recognising the valuable work the team perform in preventing financial abuse of our residents, and a hundred and thirty thousand pounds to cancel the proposed reduction in opening hours at the recycling and household waste sites. Chairman, this is a sound budget and MTFS. It contains many challenges, but the county council has demonstrated its ability to respond over the years, and I'm hopeful it will continue to do so. So I move the motion on the order paper, which is listed under items A to P. Thank you.
I'd like to call upon Mr Shepherd to second, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I second the motion. I'd like, first of all, to give a few examples of that capital programme that Byron referred to, and then move on to make some comments about how I think things stand at the moment. So, capital programme first. Byron said, it's the, you know, a huge capital programme that we have. Some examples of it, there's two hundred and eighty million pounds for roads and highway infrastructure, that schemes ranging from the Muslin Strip Road, the Zoch Bridge replacement, and the junction twenty-three A five-one-two improvements. There's a hundred and thirty million pounds for schools, most of it being invested in new places to meet rising demand, and also, of course, as Byron mentioned, particular investment in the SEND requirement. There's seventy million pounds going into new workspaces and industrial units, there's eight million pounds investment in rural broadband across the county, which will take coverage beyond that ninety-seven percent of properties that are currently targeted. And finally, in my, no, my shortlist, there's sixty million pounds for initiatives to support carbon reduction, and that will generate efficiency savings for the county council and income generation. So capital programme, a few snapshots from that. But moving on now to, I think, where we are at the moment, and in my view, some key themes we need, we ought, is our duty, to make widely known to our constituents, to parish councils, and yes, to our members of parliament as well. And suppose, one word for the moment, is that one word Byron mentioned, uncertainty. Uncertainty. Here we are with a four-year MTFS, based on one year of knowledge and three years of the best possible prediction based on what we know. It boils down to that. It's been a very difficult past few years, past decade really, and that's, uncertainty is going to carry on. Why? People say to us, you know, why can't you do this, why can't you do that? Growth and cost pressures will remain and will even increase. We all know the demographics in the county show there's an aging and a growing population, therefore more social care, more schools, more highways, and at the same time, costs are rising. Living wage is increasing, that's a good thing, but with that, of course, comes an extra driver of costs for the county council. There's a pressure we need to meet. Climate change is another, I think, key point to always remind ourselves of, and our own declaration of an emergency will bring increasing pressure on our resources. Vitigation of flood prevention, even perhaps public buildings, cooling systems need to be installed, solar farms, better insulation. And I suppose the final sort of big point for us all to carry away and keep repeating, emphasising, is that savings will continue to have to be made. We need to focus still on efficiency. So there are no easy wins. Now, despite the elements of good news, which there clearly are, and let's celebrate those, they are good news, there's still a lot of difficult news, which we, all of us, have to be, I think, frank enough with the public to convey to them, to look people in the eye and say, you know, this is actually... eye and say, you know, this is actually how we are currently seeing things. Huge pressures, but over the past years, as the council, we've shown, we can rise to them. We've heard Byron comment on how we are placed as opposed to others. They're not gloating, it's a matter of fact, it's a tribute to the work that we've all done. So I certainly want to second the motion, and despite the fact of our political party differences, I do really think this is a budget that can be commended to everybody in this chamber. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Shepherd. Dr Irons, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I thank Byron and Mr Shepherd for the excellent speech. As he said, all a hundred and fifty upper tier authorities are having to deal with the same fiscal uncertainty, and I ask myself as a Labour Group leader here what my Labour colleagues are doing across England, and of course, they are having to face the same uncertainties, and what, if anything, would we do differently? So I have to praise our officers, particularly our senior officers, the officers of the Transformation Unit, and all our frontline staff who have enabled this council to set a legal budget for the next two years, despite this per durable austerity being inflicted on local government by a national Conservative government. I would also like to thank our residents for their patience and for their apparent willingness, though we haven't been on Facebook yet, their apparent willingness to pay three point nine nine per cent extra in council tax as we manage their expectations, which is bureaucratic speak for telling them to expect to pay more and get less. There are many positives in this budget and things that I wholeheartedly support. I'm so pleased that the Corporate Asset Investment Fund has moved away from buying office blocks in Tamworth and Nottingham and Citron garages in the city, and is investing in social care infrastructure, which clearly is a win-win for us in that we can help social care providers to have affordable premises, which then makes it easier for us to set fees that are reasonable. It's great that there are going to be five hundred SEND places and that there will be capital investments in that, and I think forward funding of highway infrastructure. Infrastructure first was one of my mantras in many elections, and so it's really nice to see. Seventy-three million for highway infrastructure, twenty-eight million for schools, and clearly my friends in Extinction Rebellion will be pleased to see the sixteen million in the carbon reduction strategy. But as a Labour Group, we do have doubts. We have serious doubts about the target operating model and its impact on the wider system. Yes, we are perhaps able to be more efficient, and perhaps we can reduce the hours of care that we provide for people with learning difficulties, dementia and physical conditions causing immobility, but what if? What if as a result of those lost care hours, some of them start wandering or fall and break their hip, or get an infection that was avoidable if only they had been visited and moved and turned more frequently? The cost will not necessarily come to us and may not necessarily be counted in our statistics, and a truly systemic way of looking at our budget would take into account the cost to the police, to the NHS, and to families if that target operating model doesn't operate if truly, in a truly, if system-wide, efficient way. And so, as the Labour Group, we cannot really endorse this budget when nationally, the same group, the Conservatives, are continuing to drive national policies that are making our job here much harder. Yes, we are seeing raises to the living wage. What we are not seeing are stopping zero hour contracts, the trickery that enables employers to pay people a minimum wage half-time and get away without paying national insurance, and the lack of rent controls. We're not seeing anything coming about the National Planning Policy Framework. We are not seeing anything coming about the academisation of schools, which has taken the, the power and the cash away from this authority and left us with the responsibility. We're not seeing anything to address the improvements in special needs education that take place in a school framework that puts schools on increasing pressure to show success without measuring value added and provides perverse incentives to move more difficult children on to specialist provision, and that makes our budget very difficult to deal with. And, of course, devolution, the version of devolution I expect to come from this government will be again about taking the power and the cash further up the funnel and leaving the responsibilities down here with us and doing very little for frontline services. So though I have great respect for all the work that has gone into this budget, I'm afraid the Labour Group will not be voting for it. Thank you.
Mrs Radford, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to thank John Wilson's team for all their hard work delivering a challenging budget, and they've, that's their credit to us. I wish to draw the attention of the county to the investment that the Adults and Communities Departments are putting into extra care housing to increase the capacity. The county has previously made financial contributions to the development of two extra care facilities by East Midlands Housing of one point five million. These contributions secure nomination rights to Blaeberry, delivering forty-four one-bed units, six two-bed units, and thirteen bungalows. In Loughborough, one point five million, delivering fifty-two bed, one, fifty-two one-bed units and ten two-bed units. The Social Care Investment Plan will seek to develop further extra care facilities with North West Leicestershire and Hinkley and Bosworth being the priorities. To date, county have invested four million to secure thirty-five units of accommodation at three locations for working age adults. A further two point three million has been offered to secure further seventeen units at three locations, again for working age adults. Additional to this, three million is allocated for the redevelopment of County Council Site in North West Leicestershire, which will deliver seventeen units of supported living, a six-unit short break service, and community life choices, which is a day service unit. You can see from the capital programme that funding has also been allocated for the trees in Hinkley and Ashby Court in Loughborough, both of which I managed to have a look around before the refurbishment was started. I would all like, I would also like to take this opportunity to mention the Thomas Cook Collection. It is anticipated that the full catalogue will be completed by the end of twenty twenty-one. Given the expected interest, a promotional display will be exhibited in the autumn for the county councillors and a promotional display for the general public in January twenty twenty-one. And again, I would like to thank all the officers and the staff in that department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Radford. Mr Galton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you to Byron Rhodes for very much acknowledging how uncertain the future is. And I think it would be churlish not to acknowledge that we have received a better settlement this year with more money to help manage mainly rise in demand for social care services for old people and children. Would acknowledge that some additional funding for tackling special education needs and offsetting some of the overspends that are occurring and look set to continue, nowhere near enough, but some money has been made available. We'd also welcome the more money for highways maintenance in the budget and the decision not to go ahead with three hundred and thirty thousand pounds of planned reductions in the summer opening hours at household waste sites. The council continues to find new income to support services through trading and investment in property and employment sites, and acknowledge doing as much as it can to find alternative sources of funding. So that, that's, that's the positive and the good news, and you think, well, he's going to support this budget. Well, no, this group is not going to support the budget, because really, that said, and what Byron then very much went on to be very open and acknowledge, is that that is pretty much the end of the good news, Madam Chairman, because the long term remains extremely worrying. The storm clouds are still gathering, and there really is no certainty about the future. Long-term planning is impossible because the settlement is only for one year. We have no idea what the situation is going to be next year and the year after that. This, of course, is exactly what Byron has criticised other councils for doing, the lack of long-term planning, but now the government is doing it to us. It wasn't meant to be like this, of course. There was going to be a national budget in the autumn, followed by CSR to cover the next three years. This was meant to be followed by announcements on business rate retention and some indication of the fair funding review for local government. None of this happened, and with the events of last week, yes, there's now going to be a budget on the eleventh of March, but it's not at all clear how much detail and what it's going to include and what they'll be in a position to announce with the new Chancellor. And of course, the cuts approved in previous budgets are still being rolled out. Some of them remain deeply unpopular, and people who depend on SEN transport and subsidised bus routes, for example, don't understand why the council is continuing with these reductions when they've been told by national government that austerity is over. Paragraph sixty-two of the supplementary report reminds us that residents want us to be protecting these services and not reducing them. And what worries us, Madam Chairman, is the continuing threat we face as a council and the major provider of services if we don't get a better deal, if the business rates review and the local government funding reforms don't deliver a fair deal for Leicestershire. We face the prospect of making further cuts of thirty-nine million, as acknowledged by the lead member, over the next few years. Yes, the balance, the budget is balanced this year and next year, but what is going to happen after that if these things don't help us and come to fruition? And there is an increasing dependency on council tax. Paragraph thirty-seven really does illustrate what has happened of the supplementary report I'm referring to, what has happened to our government funding Revenue Support Grant. In twenty fifteen, we got fifty-six million. Last year, we got nothing. This year, we get nothing. And at the same time, the average council tax in twenty fifteen, county council's element was two hundred and thirty-three, now it's two hundred and ninety. So what we're seeing is that as central government reduces our funds, the local council taxpayer, local residents are having to pick up more and more of the costs of providing the services. And then there is demand. We have huge demands coming. We've acknowledged those in relation to special education needs, SEND, we've acknowledged those in new school places that are required, and of course, the continuing demand to provide social care services for our elderly population. Demand is what is really driving the problem at the moment, and the, and increasing the uncertainty, and I don't have any confidence that the government has recognised this, let alone be willing to find a solution to these pressures that are facing not just us but local government generally. And we are going to find more money, as has been said by a number of members, to address the impact of flooding and climate change and increasing the backlog of drainage works required, both highway drainage works and flood relief schemes, where it would only be right for this authority to make a contribution, even if it's not our statutory responsibility. We believe we need to help communities deal with the increasing threat from flooding, and that will come at a price. And we're becoming more dependent on these one-off grants, one-year grants, special initiative funding, that we have to jump through hoops to get before we can deliver a scheme, a road improvement. We have to go through all this rigmarole of applying. Can't the government just trust us to say, here's our plan, these are our priorities, this is what we want to do, please help us fund it and let's get, and get these important jobs done? And then finally, I just wanted to refer to the capital pressures, because the capital spending requirements are huge, significant, and set to increase, and a lot of it is to do with the, um, demands arising from new housing growth, both at the moment and what's going to come in the future. But surely, the first principle should be, and I have heard the leader say this, is that these developments should be funding their own infrastructure requirements. They shouldn't be having to rely. Yes, there would always be necessary some upfront funding to get things delivered before the whole development gets finished, particularly with regard to schools and roads and so on and so forth. But there's a major problem here, a major gap developing, that the money coming is predicted not to be enough to deliver all this growth, and that is signalled in this report. And one of the solutions that we're coming up with is that we're going to have to ask district councils to provide more money, and that's from their own tax revenues and presumably from the Homes Bonus and so on and so forth. Well, I predict that that is going to be extremely difficult. I think those agreements, some will be unable to do it. They're struggling as it is to deliver their statutory services, and if the Homes Bonus money looks like it's going to change, being phased out, some of those districts are wholly dependent on that just to balance their budget. So I, I see this being increasingly difficult, how this huge gap in capital is going to be funded going forward, and I don't think we have any solutions to that. So for all these reasons, we acknowledge that this is a, a less painful budget than has been for the last eight or ten years, but the future just remains absolutely impossible to predict or plan for, and for that reason, we will be opposing this budget. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Mr Old, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have to deal with the here and now. I can try and influence central government and do wherever I can do that, but the here and now for me is the demand level that comes particularly with children's social care. And when you look at the growth in the budget, you will see social care placements, you will see frontline social care staff increased caseloads, you will see social care market premium to support recruitment. Why do we have to pay a premier to support recruitment? But the answer is quite obvious, we're the lowest-funded top-tier authority in England. We have over six hundred children located in Leicestershire from other authorities who can afford to pay foster parents more than we can. That is the reality, I suppose. Some people might think, well, we just shrug our shoulders and say, so what? That hasn't been the case, Madam Chairman, and on the last time that I shall be speaking to a budget as the lead member for Children and Family Services, from a personal viewpoint, I want to thank both the leader and the deputy leader for the support that they have given me and through me, the department and those children out there. Over the years, there has never been an occasion when we have said, we've got a problem and the money hasn't been found, and I believe in giving praise where praises do. I can't alter some of the issues at national level. I can argue until I'm voiceless and will continue to do that, but I can and must acknowledge the support that we've had in the budget process over the years, which for children in our care now amounts to forty million pounds in total. I have to ask myself a question. Why is it, after all the innovations in the last forty years, that we still have so many children coming into care? Why is it that we still seem to have so many families that cannot function in a positive way, but become dysfunctional to the point where children have to be taken into care for their own protection? Why is it that out there in the wider world, if you have a teenage mum with a baby, it's difficult to find a foster parent? Why is it if you're trying to place a sibling group, which may have been determined by a court, people are not, less happy to take two or three than they are to take one? And why is it that the most vulnerable in our society, those children who have got obvious special needs, it is even more difficult to find somebody to take them? That is why we've got market premium written in here. And I have to say to my colleagues on the Labour benches and on the Liberal Democrat benches, in refusing this budget, would I be justified in saying that you're also refusing the growth in this budget for those people? the growth in this budget for those people? Actually, I don't believe that would be the case, because over the years that we've worked together, I've always had support from across this council in terms of this particular agenda. But Nick and Byron have never once said to me, sorry, mate, you can't have that money. Now, we do know that there's another issue here, and it's embellished in the capital programme, the provision of additional school places. And I know, because I sign off every one oh six agreement for the entire county, that at district or borough council level, there is an issue that can only be resolved by the government over social housing and affordable homes, where the outcome is, this application is not viable if we have to pay money for the local schools. That we can't decide, but the responsibility, as Simon says, lies with us. We have to provide the school places. Nineteen million this current year. Then you look at SEND. It's not that many years ago, and I can recall these days, this was my field of work, where the philosophy in this country was, it was wrong for any child with special needs to go to a special school. And we were going to follow the American model and the Norwegian model, which proposed to do away with all specialist establishments. Ambitions that failed. There was a loss of about a third of special schools in Norway and in California, which was the most radical of the American states, around about forty percent. I look at this list and I think, our officers have done us proud to actually identify the type of establishment that these children need to go to. And that is why I will support this budget and recommend it to this chamber. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Old. Mr Malaney.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Residents in Leicestershire have for many years had to put up with county council budgets that have seen council taxes rocket and services cut back. Now, it's a situation that affects much of the country, but it's particularly bad here in Leicestershire because we are one of the worst-funded counties in the country, and we are still waiting for the fair funding that we need from the Tory government. So this year's budget again sees another council tax hike as services become even more dependent on the council tax revenue as central government financial support has declined over recent years. After many years of cuts, it's welcome that there's a reprieve this year, that there aren't that many new cuts. However, we are seeing some of the service cuts from previous years beginning to bite, including threatened cuts to the bus services that are likely to occur. And after years of cumulative cutbacks, we have in front of us in the document this huge threat of the over thirty-eight million of unidentified savings which need to be made over the next four years, and which could mean huge further cutbacks to services and council tax rises in future. If we're to avoid that appalling situation, then we do need to see the fair funding delivered. Now, councillor Rushton's statement today led on fair funding. At the meeting two years ago, this statement also led on fair funding and described his meeting along with councillor Rhodes of the then Parliamentary Undersecretary of State, Mr Rishi Sunak, in which Mr Sunak offered warm words towards the Leicestershire Fair Funding campaign. Now, it's fair to say that Parliamentary Undersecretary of State is not exactly the most influential position within government, and so then he probably didn't have much opportunity to see that policy implemented. However, now he is Chancellor of the Exchequer, he is in charge of the nation's finances, and what we want to see over the next few years is him delivering on those warm words and delivering the fair funding that Leicestershire needs so that we don't have to have huge cutbacks to services and council tax rises. Now, we were told that we were seeing the end of austerity. The Tory Chancellor said that, I think, almost a year ago. Unfortunately, what the Tory government says and what it delivers is not always the same, and therefore, it's a huge shame that we are seeing that the new Chancellor has said that he still wants to go ahead with the five percent savings from each government department, which is obviously going to increase pressure on public services and the public sector. So residents of Leicestershire are again facing higher taxes from this budget, and in previous years, they've had to put up with big service cuts as well. Now, we've got a Tory government in place, it seems now, until probably almost certainly twenty twenty-four. So there's four years in which we want to see this government finally delivering the fair funding that Leicestershire needs so that we don't have to keep having service cuts and council tax rises in Leicestershire. And our group will continue to campaign until finally the residents of this area get the fairness from the government that they deserve.
Mr O'Shea, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Nobody wants to increase, nobody in this room wants to increase council tax. That's not what we're here for. We don't, we don't support raising council taxes willy-nilly. But what we are, we're a council, we should be working together. We have a great increase in social need. Our budget needs to look after those vulnerable people. If we don't increase this council tax, those people will suffer. We're here to protect our communities. I don't like doing it, but I will vote for this budget, because the one thing that we need to do as a community is support our vulnerable victims, our vulnerable children, our vulnerable elderly. And without this budget, it will not support them. So I wholeheartedly support this budget.
Thank you, Mr O'Shea. Mr Pearson, please.
Thank you, Chair. I support this, and I think I've got to congratulate Byron and Nick for being transparent. And let's admit it, he said it's a year. If you've been in business, you all know budgets are uncertain. It is guess estimates, let's be honest. We do know some money that's coming in. I don't want to talk about the national government, this is our budget, this is Leicestershire's budget. I'd rather have this budget than a blank sheet of paper. So we've got something to work to, and that's very important. And it is guesswork sometimes, and it is difficult because situations happen, as we know, with special educational needs. There's a report just out recently, one point three million pupils in England, one point three, have special educational needs. Nine point four billion pounds are spent in this area. Eighty-one point three percent of local authorities overspend in this area, and we're funding it. We're acknowledging it, we're accepting it. But another eighty-odd, four percent in this country struggle and don't prepare for it. We're preparing for it. So again, I support this. Forty-four percent of these children are permanently excluded. We don't know that's going to happen. I'm sure Ivan doesn't know, he just comes on his desk. Is that correct, Ivan? There you go. Let's get real. Let's stop playing politics and let's talk about reality, what's happening in Leicestershire. These are the facts. It's our budget, not the national budget. We're playing politics. You've got fifty percent of authorities that get Ofsted actually underperform, and I think we're performing very well. We've got weaknesses, of course, but we've got a lot of strengths. Out of the one point three billion pupils, believe it or not, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-eight-hundred, legally, we have to provide services to them. Legally, it's statutory because they've been identified. Then we've got the other, one point million, one point and forty-one thousand million, who have got form of statement, which we have to provide some service to. So it's a massive issue. Again, it's not going to go away, and we, again, in this programme and in this budget, have identified it. So I do think one of the issues that we are working on is early intervention, where we can help. We've talked about this in some of the committees I've been on. Early identification, which I know Ivan has spoken to about, that's important, so we know early on, so down the line, we can budget for it. And finally, you know, better integrated services, and constantly this council talks about partnerships, integrated services. So in a way, we're working very hard. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Pearson. Mr Mayor, please.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Others have spoken at great lengths on this budget, but I would like to limit my comments on the adult social care and communities provisions within it. At a time when we are told that we have an aging population in Leicestershire, and that calls on adult services are increasing and at an all-time high, it's concerning that we have a net reduction of four point four million pounds in the adult social care budget, especially as we are once again asking council taxpayers to pay an extra two percent additional levy on their council tax. And isn't it interesting in the papers that it's highlighted as additional levy and not as a normal council tax? Just to pay for this increasing demand, we've also budgeted an extra income from charges, so a double whammy for some of our residents. A five million pound per annum saving is anticipated from what is called a target operating model, and I think some members have alluded to that already. Within the department, we are told that this is not about cutting services but about placing the best outcome for service users. However, how we expect to save five million pound each year and not cut services is something I'm very sceptical about. It also leads to the question that if the savings are so great, what was the department doing previously? Was it that inefficient? There are questions about community libraries and how they will fare now that financial support from County Hall is being tapered off. It's easy to complete, sorry, it's easy to claim success for something if you're still funding it. But what will now happen, that the taps are being turned off, how many will fold in the next few years as volunteers find it to struggle to continually raise money to keep these places open? Fundraising is a draining business, believe you and me. However, Mrs Chairwoman, it's not all bad, there is some good in the budget. I welcome the extra one million pound in recognition of increasing demand of an aging population. I also welcome the extra one million pound going to help people with learning disabilities. It's essential funding. Also, the extra three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand pounds going into mental health to keep pace with demand, and I think these are growth areas which we all would support. It's a real shame that because of national government actions that we are funded, sorry, the way that we're funded, we have to make these overall in savings. I honestly do believe the offices, the director especially, and his colleagues are trying their best for the county and its residents. I also do believe that Mr Blunt is helping as well. He is always open and honest and engaging with us in our scrutiny meeting. And our last scrutiny meeting, when we discussed his budget, he was open, transparent and fair. But if you look at the budget just for that department, we are still looking at cuts in this year of four and a half million pounds nearly, and that's hard to take, especially when we're asking residents to pay two percent more on their council tax so we can fund that department. So there is an imbalance somewhere in this budget overall. Some areas are getting more and some less, and I don't believe that it's right to ask residents for two percent more and provide them with less. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr Rushton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I didn't intend to speak because I usually leave it to Byron, but just a few words to Simon and Terry. We recognise all the things you both said in your speeches, but we are where we are, and we have to put forward a balanced budget. And you've both complimented us on our balanced budget and our approach we're taking. So I would ask you, if you can't vote for it, at least abstain, because we recognise the problems that we've got from on high. We recognise that, Mr Malaney, we are the worst-funded in the country, not halfway, the worst. We recognise that we have been battling fair funding for many, many years. This budget, and it was Jewel that said it, is open, transparent, honest and fair. So don't vote against it if you recognise the problems we've got, we're doing our best with it. We don't even particularly have a problem with educational health and care plans per se. We don't have a problem with the government saying we must fund children from zero to twenty-five. What we do have a problem with is government policies where they don't give us the money. That is the struggle that Ivan's been wrestling with, and I thank Ivan for his warm words, because we do really do our best, myself and Byron, to listen to Ivan, to listen to Richard, who deals with adult social care, and most of all, to listen to the members of the public. And we do put our money where our consultation results lie. So we recognise the problems you've got, the things you've said about the government, but think about this council and what we're trying to do with the money we've got. You've complimented it as a good budget, at least abstain to recognise the work we do with the money we've got, because at the moment, we're not getting offered any more, we are having to make difficult decisions, but we are focusing our resources where the public asks us to focus them.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. Mr Payne.
Yes, once again, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to speak to the departmental, the ENT departmental budget for this year. Just having listened to the leader, Nick, speak, can I also add that he's listened to me and the department as well in our cry for some additional funding, which is why it's welcome that seven point three million pounds has been added to this year's budget. Before I go into that, can I just mention about the climate change? Look, we declared a climate emergency as a council, and we've been working in earnest to try and adapt the strategies, the environment strategy and the action plans, and also to reduce our carbon emissions with immediate effect since last May when we adopted that position. At a future council meeting, we'll be looking a lot closer at the environment strategy and the action plan. But for now, I just want to report that we've really, really made some great progress. We've already reduced from two thousand and fifteen, I think our carbon emissions was over thirty thousand tonnes, we're looking, as we speak today, around thirteen thousand tonnes, so it's over half since two thousand and fifteen, and we've reduced it since last year by about eighteen percent. Of course, Cabinet allocated a further four hundred and fifty thousand pounds to be able to look at how we develop an action plan in respect of our climate emergency commitment. But like I said, that will come to a future council meeting. In terms of the highways budget, look, I recognise too everything that's been said. I've stood up in previous years, and to a certain extent, you could argue the Environment and Transport Department have had to take the brunt of some of the austerity and the cuts that Leicestershire County Council have had to deal with in two thousand and nine, ten. If capital spend had continued at the rate, we'd be spending about thirty-two million pounds a year. We're currently spending about twenty-two million pounds a year on maintenance, that's revenue and capital of maintenance of our highway. Since thirteen fourteen, we're spending about six million pounds a year on network improvements. We're spending less than one million pounds a year on network improvements. They're the kind of things that all members would like to see on their network, in their areas, we just don't have the money. So it's welcome that the Prime Minister's promised to level up funding across the country, and I think Simon spoke to it about these one-off grants and how we spend a lot of money chasing the windows of opportunity to bid for grant money, often under competitive conditions. And what we're crying out for is a streamlining of all these grants. And actually, there's been such a strong focus on infrastructure spend. Well, that's great, we can build new infrastructure, build new roads, and we're very proud of the mountain relief road proposals that are going through and other initiatives. But what we're really crying out for is revenue monies. We need a levelling up of revenue here in Leicestershire to be able to maintain the existing network. So when we do build these new infrastructures, they work, and they work in harmony with the existing network. So that's the fight we have on our hands. In terms of the seven point three million pound allocation, I just want to run through how we intend to split that out. And bearing in mind, this is a budget, so within the year, there might be variances of money spent depending on what issues crop up at any one time. But our forecast is for three and a half million pounds to be added to the network maintenance. That's so we can keep the network in its safest condition, which is a statutory responsibility of the authority. And all point six million will focus on speed reductions. So we've already had the average speed camera initiative, we intend to continue that initiative, and we intend to add cameras in accordance with the policies we've already set out. One point one five million will be for vehicle activated signs, local road improvement schemes, and to address member and community requested improvements. And of course, they'll all be considered within the current frameworks and the policies that we've set out. We intend to put just over half a million pounds into supporting parking enforcement, including improved signage lines and increased presence of community enforcement officers in targeted locations. And we want to spend about two hundred and eighty thousand to improve our green environment, including maintenance of rural verges, trees and hedges. I've already spoken about the flood monies that we're allocating, and finally, we're going to be allocating further eighty thousand to support our parish engagement. Because I think it's true, throughout this period of austerity, there has been something missing. We've had to, we've had to... We've had to reduce the number of staff and the number of staff within the department that can actually engage with the communities. And I can fully understand why some communities feel like they've been forgotten. So we need to now ramp up our engagement and with our Keeping It Local programme, which is designed to educate members about the regulatory framework the department works in, but also try and work with communities to help them understand how they can achieve their objectives. And we intend to press that even further. And finally, Madame Chairman, can I just clarify something that often gets conflated in this chamber unnecessarily? I don't believe we have cut the subsidies to buses. In actual fact, we're spending more because of commercial market forces on subsidising buses. And that's contrary to what happens at many other authorities in the country where they spend nothing on subsidising buses. Thank you, Madame Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Payne. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Madame Chairman. I rise to support the budget because I believe it's a fantastic document and a fantastic achievement. When you think what this council has actually had to endure and undertake over these years to be able to get to a point where we can present this budget. It's on the background of us for the third successive year being praised as the most efficient upper-tier council in the country. And that's unitary as well. So on the back of that, we stand here today being third-time most efficient council in the country, upper tier, with a balanced budget, with plans going forward, trying our very best to encompass all the areas where we need to help people. And that's hard, and you've had that outlined to you. And yet, we hear people saying, well, I don't think we'll vote for this. I wonder what the members of the public could think of a council that they can see is working so hard to achieve for the people and the most vulnerable people. We're doing all of that. And yet, people's comments are wonderful. They think the offices are good and they like how everything's done and they're praising everybody, but we won't vote for it. Now, I think that's silly. I just wonder what the public view is when they look and analyse and just think, well, hang on, you're the top tier, top performing council, you're balancing budgets, you're spending all these millions trying to look after people and help people. I think it's really churlish. And I won't say deep political because nobody said today, this budget isn't right. This is the budget you should have, what we've got in front of us. No, you haven't. With respect, I'm old-fashioned politics because that's where you really show your marker. Do it this way. Tell the public what you would take away, what cuts you would make to make this a better budget. But you've not said a word. All you're doing is decrying what is basically an amazing document. And I'm very grateful to Byron and we all compliment the officers and I'm doing it again. But you can sit there and smirk and laugh and grin. It doesn't matter because it is a good product. You haven't had the courage to say, we will cut. We will do this because it's correct to create a balanced budget. This is how we will pay our bills. No, you haven't. Smug, smile, but we won't vote for it. Well, the public will eventually have their chance to comment on the management and the stewardship of how this council's been run. Thank you, Madame Chairman. I support the budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harrison. I think we've had a very good debate. My next speaker will be the 12th speaker and there will be no more speakers after that. Mr. Blunt.
You're going to cut me off then? I think there are two Joel Myers serving on this council. There's one who comes to scrutiny, Madame Chairman. The nicest chap you wish to meet. I went to Buckingham Palace with him once. He's just really nice. And he supports everything that we do in adult social care. I almost heard a glimpse of him towards the end of his speech. He says that we're doing it right. He says that we're under budget. He says that we're actually trying to find ways to help people and also make some savings. In fact, quite often at the end of the meeting, he comes up to me and says the same thing. And then once a year, and I hope this year it'll be different, another Joel Meyer arrives who thinks that everything we do is the worst thing ever. And I would love, I really dearly hope and pray that one day you'll come here and be the same person as you are in scrutiny. Because really, overall, you do what the general public would expect you to do. Sorry, Madame Chairman, through you. The general public would expect us to do the best we've got with the money that we've got. That's what this entire budget is about. Adult social care is completely about that. Nobody in scrutiny ever says that we are uncaring or unkind. You've heard earlier about the property of putting money into new buildings to help us find new ways of doing that. That's something other councils aren't doing because we're trying to find good outcomes. Just what Dr. Irons commented earlier. Again, Dr. Irons, you can join us at scrutiny through you, Chairman, and sit at the back and hear time and time again how we're doing things right. The target operating model is a really clever thing. All it does is we try to delay people needing expensive services. That is good for them and delivers a saving for us afterwards. It is the most virtuous circle you'll ever see in government, local or national. And it's really, I'm really proud of it. It is innovative. It is brave. And I'd like you to come along because I know you care a lot about it. I think you'd find it very informative. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blunt. Mr. Rhodes will now, as the mover of the motion, reply.
Yes, Chairman, we're in violent agreement. In violent agreement that there's nothing wrong with the budget. Speaker after speaker's pointed that out. Not one amendment. How many budget meetings have we had throughout the years with not one amendment? We all agree that we're the most efficient council in the country. We all agree that fair funding is what we want. And we all agree that our officers are doing a wonderful job. So like Mr. Harrison, like Mr. Blunt, like Mr. Rushton, like many other speakers, all I can say to you is this budget deserves the unanimous approval of the council. And if it doesn't do that, well, the people that vote against it are simply churlish. And I can't say any more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rhodes. There will now be a recorded vote taken in accordance with standing order 28/4. So I'll hand over to Mrs. Haslam to do that.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, as standing orders provide, they reflect the legislation which requires that there be a recorded vote on the... Sorry, I've got the speaker thingy on, so I'll try and speak up. The standing orders provide that there must be a recorded vote on a proposition which relates to the calculation of the precept. I'm going to read out a list of members' names and invite members, please, to indicate if you wish to vote for or against the motion moved by Mr. Rhodes and seconded by Mr. Shepherd, or whether you wish to abstain. Mr. Barclay. Mr. Bedford. Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bill. Mr. Blunt. Mr. Bolter. Mr. Bray. Mr. Brecken. Dr. Bremner. Mrs. Broadley. Mr. Charlesworth. Mr. Coxon. Mr. Crooks. Dr. Einan. Dr. Felton. Mrs. Friar. Mr. Galton. Mr. Gamble. Mr. Gillard. Mrs. Hack. Mr. Harrison. Dr. Hill. Mr. Hunt. Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Licarish. Mr. Mia. Mr. Morgan. Mr. Malaney. Mrs. Newton. Mr. O'Shea. Mr. Orson. Mr. Osborne. Mr. Old. Mrs. Page. Mr. Payne. Mr. Parton. Mr. Pearson. Mr. Pendleton. Mr. Fillmore. Mr. Poland. Mrs. Posnet. Mrs. Radford. Mr. Rhodes. Mrs. Richards. Mr. Richardson. Mrs. Richardson. Mr. Rushton. Mrs. Seaton. Mr. Sheehan. Mr. Shepherd. Mrs. Taylor. Mr. Welsh. Mrs. A. Wright. Mrs. M. Wright. Mr. Wyatt. Thank you. So 35 for... 13 against. And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 abstained.
Right. 35 for, 13 against, 6 abstained, so the motion is carried. We're now going to item B, which is the community safety strategy. Mr. Old will move.
Thank you, Chair. In moving the motion on the Green Order paper today on the community safety strategy, I'd like to draw members' attention to page 210, paragraph 9, which sets out the priorities of the community safety strategy. I've not heard anybody disagree with these priorities, so I don't think that I need to make a long speech today. The paperwork is self-explanatory and I would recommend it to the chamber. Thank you.
Mrs. Taylor to second.
Thank you, Madame Chairman. I'm happy to second and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Dr. Einan.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for bringing this community safety strategy. The Scrutiny Commission, I think, particularly interested in this because we did feel there was a need to understand our responsibilities in relation to crime and disorder, particularly in the light of the relatively recent invention of the Police and Crime Commissioner as a role and to what extent that skews the system. And it is complex. And I think the diagram on page 219 is extremely useful. And it does make it quite clear how many different agencies and stakeholders are involved in this important work. And it's all the more complex, of course, being a two-tier authority, not a unitary authority. And I'm pleased to see that the intention to build partnerships and identify priorities and find effective strategies. And I look forward in scrutiny to seeing the outcomes measured from these strategies. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Einan. Mr. Parton.
Given that sadly, due to the fact that funding allocations to this County Council has reduced over the last decade, one of the things that perhaps we knew 20, 30 years ago was a youth provision. And seeing this, it's always good to look at the people behind the paperwork, the processes. And a great example of this is it was in Loughborough Town Centre where currently, we, in Loughborough, we enjoy what can be described as, the word would be remarkable, relationship with Leicestershire Police. Truly astonishing. But yet, Loughborough Town Centre was plagued with antisocial behaviour and criminality. And there was a toxic mix really beginning to come together. But Leicestershire County Council did some direct intervention in the very epicentre of where this trouble was happening. And last December, through there, I met the manager that headed up the progress. And I've written it down in three. It was smart, it was specific, and it was successful. Because not one of the young people that was in danger of being sucked into something wholly much more dangerous, county lines, exploitation of any degree, never returned to that criminality. That area has become cleansed of the problems, but those young people can now enjoy that area for what it was meant to be. So it is remarkable to see that despite the fact that we have had to contend with service reductions that were forced upon us, that we were able, with our scant resources in that department, a team of five people, that we were able to go into an area, work with Leicestershire Police and systemically remove all of the problems and return... Councillor Old said earlier on that some people struggle and some families struggle to live positively. Here was an intervention that was able to restore positivity into those families and to those young people's lives and save them from something a whole lot more dangerous. So I fully commend this and give you here a classic example of how this works.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parton. Mr. Pearson, please.
Trying to keep this short. Basically, I support this. I think partnership work in this is very important. We do scrutinise it, but also I think we all agree that it's district, it's Police, Crime Commission, it's the County Council and other partners come together. And again, I think we should applaud ourselves because we're very good at this over the years. Just recently, I'm involved with a partnership, the Safer Mountain Partnership. We had a tremendous workshop, basically to do with serious violence, youth violence and violent crime. There's a target there with the county and the partners. And this targeting and early intervention is very important for us all to make Leicestershire safe. So we look forward to scrutiny, Dr. Einan, in the future. But I think it's important that we maintain the good partnerships and we focus on these targets to reduce this, particularly young violent crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mrs. Taylor, you reserved your right to reply.
Thank you, Madame Chairman. I think this strategy joins up all the dots and brings everything together for us. And I echo everyone's words here about partnership working. This is key to this working and for a community safety strategy to work. We need all the partners on board and working together. I think the priorities, the seven priorities you see on page 214 and 215, they're really strong links between the crime and disorder related priorities and the three priorities within the LCC five-year strategy plan, focused on community safety, which are wellbeing and opportunity, keeping people safe and great communities. The community safety encompasses not only criminal activities but also takes account of social and environmental influences. And I think we've seen that across the board, especially quite recently within Charmwood with Operation Lionheart. The key work streams linked to the LCC community safety team are highlighted under five headings that you can see there on page 217, which is ASB, Prevent and Hate Crime, Serious Organised Crime and Emerging Threats, Domestic Abuse and LSC SB Support. And this strategy purposely introduces a flexible approach which will enable the community safety team to focus on areas of serious and organised crime and risk as they emerge nationally and locally. And I think we're well aware of the risks that are coming out towards us now are changing constantly. We now have a lot of cybercrime that is very hard to detect, county lines, knife crime, and these are all things that we're battling against all the time. So as I said, really important partnership working to make this work from us here at the County Council, but down to the districts, down to the police and everyone working from the same page has helped enormously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Mr....
Thank you, Chair. I would also echo the comments about partnership working. I've chaired the Community Safety Partnership for the last year. And one of the aspects of it that I've inherited from Joe Orson, which I hope I've been able to maintain, has been this good cohesive working between two tiers, between the Police, Probation and the Police and Crime Commissioners Office. And with that, Madame Chair, I move the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Old.
Thank you again, Chair. And can I thank Simon Galton fairly quickly in what I'm...
And can I thank Simon Galton fairly quickly in what I'm about to say? I went to him some months ago and asked about the possibility of a high member panel from scrutiny to look at the role of corporate parenting. And he agreed, and we've ended up with a document which I think can easily be recommended to every member in the chamber, although it may actually make one or two feel a little bit uncomfortable. And the reason it may make you feel uncomfortable is when you look at page 2, 3, 4, "Councillors as Corporate Parents". Now, I'm sure that you're all diligent, have read this, have absorbed it, and can reel out example after example where you fulfil all of the criteria. But just in case, by having an understanding of the profile and needs of the children in care of the local authority, by being aware of the impact on looked-after children of all council decisions, critically, by considering whether this would be good enough for your own child, and ask yourself the question, if it isn't, what have you as an individual councillor done about it? I move the motion, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Old. Mrs Taylor to second.
I'm happy to second, Madam Chairman, and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Mr Welsh.
Thank you, Chairman. Oh, sorry, I've got a frog in my throat. I welcome the report, and this group will certainly be supporting it. I just want to say a few words, though, about things behind it. Because often we see strategy documents like this, and you can't find offence in it, you can't find anything wrong, but what does it really mean and does it actually make a difference? Now, Ivan mentioned the scrutiny panel that did work here, and for my sins, I ended up as one of the three member champions, and I've picked up the role of dealing with housing. So just a little bit about what goes on in the background, where officers go that extra mile. Well, in following that up, I wanted to deal with housing and speak to chief executives at the districts. So off I plodded to see chief executives, and you find out that great work is being done in the background. Great work at coming up with a covenant or a plan of how the districts can work in partnership with ourselves. And at the meeting, they showed me the four things, just in housing, that they want to help us, they want to deliver to help us with corporate parenting. Corporate parenting. And they want all allocation policies to remove the local connection for all our care leavers, to provide housing skills training to all, to include debt advice and tenancy support, trying to get CAB to offer specific money and budgeting advice, and then support for care leavers when moving into properties by decorating them and giving handy person support. Well, to me, that's real practical help, and that's what can go on behind a strategy document like this. So I welcome it. I'd like to thank Ivan and the officers for putting it up here today. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chair. Can I say, on behalf of the Labour Group and our leader, Terry, we will be supporting this initiative. One of the aims of the government legislation that's entitled "Every Child Matters" was to place the duty of care on local authorities to produce a plan which addresses disadvantage, raises achievement, and safeguards children and young people in their area. I really do feel honoured to be invited as one of the three councillors to take on the role of corporate parenting and help in some way to make this legislation really effective. Corporate parenting responsibilities are intended to encourage people and organisations to do as much as possible towards improving the lives of children who are care experienced as well as looked-after children. The work involves acting in the best interest of children and young people by promoting their mental health and well-being. We should all be concerned about our children and care leavers as if they were our own children. It really is a form of social responsibility. We have as councillors and partner agencies a collective responsibility, providing the best possible care and safeguarding for the children in our area. Many looked-after children often have the poorest outcomes of all children and young people. We must do all that we can to ensure that children in care and care leavers do have the same life chances as other children, and we need to improve their outcomes. I speak from experience because I worked as a researcher for the Young Carers Research Group at Loughborough University, and I conducted a study of young carers for the borough of Southwark a number of years ago. I recall one family of four children, there was four children, there was two girls and twin boys who were three, and a terminally ill mother. What never left me was the thought that 15-year-old girl decided to put herself, get herself put into care rather than look after the children. That left a 12-year-old girl to look after two three-year-old twins. That never left me. That young girl was actually on television. She wore a veil just to tell her story to the world, how bad it was for her. A report published this week by Action for Children states that young carers spend, on average, 25 hours a week looking after their loved ones. Their unpaid work is the equivalent of £12,000 a year. It is described as the hidden child workforce. The charity says that the amount of responsibility being placed on children is appalling. Here are some statistics. Around 30% of looked-after children become homeless. 50% have emotional and mental health issues. Only 4% go on to higher education, while 30% are known to the criminal justice system. We must ensure that we meet the needs of all our young so that they have improved outcomes, stability, and continuity of care. It is important that they're not moved around frequently but do have a stable environment. This means that whatever the first placement that a child has should be the right placement for that child. And we must listen to children and young people, find out what their needs are and what their aspirations are so that we can set about helping them to achieve them. That's why corporate parenting matters. It will improve the lives and outcomes of some of the most vulnerable people in our country. And I believe that all councillors should commit to being corporate parents. And thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to take on this role.
Thank you, Mrs Newton. Mrs Seton.
Very pleased to be on the panel, the corporate panel, I think it was earlier next, last year, I can't remember, the time just goes so quickly. And this report reflects what that panel had in mind. It's well-written, it's simple, and it's not using over-flourery words or sentences. It's very succinct and to the point. The report shows the development of the council's corporate parenting strategy, and the strategy sets out the country's vision, sorry, the county's vision statement in the Road of Excellence, and that it will be fulfilling its mission that the children and young people in Leicestershire are safe and living within families where they can and where they can achieve their potential. The virtual school and the development of our promise ensures that the council remains ambitious and aspirational for all the children and young people in care, as well as all our care leavers. Part of that strategy sets out clearly the responsibilities of the elected members, as we've already pointed out. And to help members fulfil their responsibilities, the strategy has identified seven principles. Also, to strengthen the council's involvement, three elected champions have been appointed in health, accommodation, housing, employment, and education. And I was, as I say, pleased to be part of this panel initially, and I'm proud that this has been written in the way it has been written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Seton. Mr Hunt.
Thank you, Chair. Can I first thank the three volunteers that are champions for volunteering and say how much important I thought Ivan Old's speech was on the budget earlier on. It wasn't euphoric, but it underlined some really important things that we need to think about in the children's services. Now, I'm going to take a risk this evening, if I may, Chair, and introduce, I bet you talked about listening to our children. Our children don't appear here, but I can read a poem that's come from not a child in this authority but who was almost born into care of African heritage. And this very short poem introduces the stress that this child has felt and the coming out into adulthood. And I'll say something about the author when I've finished. He says, "They told me this was me, my family, my home, but I still ended up alone. Once again, I packed my small suitcase, another loss of trust on a wild goose chase, like a knot in a shoelace. They thought they did it best, but the more they pulled, the harder the case, and who ended up with less. And now, through the jungle of paper, theory, and pen, I just only found out my name is Lem, and I've been cheated, beaten, pushed, and hit. Now with name, Lem, and a fire been lit, now after I learnt them say I must learn throw water on the fire, but the fire still burns." As a child who was wholly dependent upon the care service in another authority and with a great family, gave them the name Norman, and into adolescence, things started to break down, and he ended up in a rather poor situation. But that man today is a poet and Chancellor of Manchester University, and his name is Lem Sissi. And I recommend books in the library, county library. That's a great book to get inside the care system and what can go right and what can go wrong. I sort of take a risk, and that's the risk.
Thank you for that, Mr Hunt. Mrs Taylor, you reserved your right...
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This corporate, I know everyone wants to get off, so I will keep it brief, you're all packing up. So this council's corporate parenting strategy sets out the responsibility to the council as corporate parents to our children in need, and outlines the key principles and expectations that provide the framework for cohesive and effective corporate parenting responsibilities for children in care and care leavers. It also supports the council's strategy plan, outcome for well-being and opportunity, and keeping people safe, and sits alongside the Children and Family Services Department Care Placement Strategy and the Children and Families Continuous Improvement Plan, the Road to Excellence. This strategy describes the council's corporate parenting role for the 613 children and young people in care and the 229 care leavers who are currently in care of the authority. Those were the figures at the end of August 2019, and those figures have gone up since then. And I think it's important that the voice and choice and safety and achievement and self-esteem in raising the aspirations of these children. And I think throughout the strategy, you can see the voice of the children, and I think that's of the utmost importance. They put this strategy together with us, we didn't do it to them, we did it with them, and you can feel their voice all the way through the strategy. And for me, that's the most important thing, that we listen to the voice of all our children. And you can see on page 230 some of the examples of what the children expect from us as corporate parents. So I hope members here do take notice of what those children are saying and what they expect from us. And I will just reiterate what Mr Old already mentioned on page 234. There is very clear guidance there for members as to what being a corporate parent means and what you should do as a corporate parent. And if there's any members here that are struggling with that or need any further support, myself, Ivan, and the department are very happy to offer that support. So if anyone here needs any more support, please do come to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mr Old.
Thank you, Chair. And can I thank colleagues for their contribution? Geoff, I think the young people in care need to know what you've been doing because that is impressive. On page 231, Chair, we gave a promise. Now, it's very easy to give a promise, to walk out of the door and ignore it. But actually, this month, there is a meeting with all of the partners in this to look at how we have developed the promise. And the young people in our care are very astute. They don't get bluffed, they see through frauds and fakers. And I hope when we have that meeting and the next corporate parenting board takes place, we can report on all seven promises, real, unarguable progress. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Old. Are we all in favour of the strategy?